And we have not had an issue with it. I mean.
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three Crest Hill City Council to meet meeting to order at seven P. M. If everyone would please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Richer. Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazzal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Sapidi.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Kowal.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, you have before you the minutes of the work session held on August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Motion would be in order? I didn't hear it first.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Richer, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of the minutes of the August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three work session. Questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question. I'm trying to find the actual position of it, but there was some confusion about which room was insulated for sound, and the minutes don't seem to reflect what's transpired in the meeting. So I'm not sure where the confusion is, but I think that for accuracy, the minutes should reflect what was stated.
What pages come?
I'm trying to find it. I looked it online.
Speech to what the eleven?
The last two pages, page ten and eleven, where Alderman Sapidi asked when the work was done and would, and he told that this room wasn't done, that it was the room down there that was done as a test, and that's not this list, so I'm confused. My mouth's not big enough. I'm so sorry. It's not usually a problem.
Well, all I could tell you is this room right outside this door is still not finished.
But that's not your statement? That's not your comment in these minutes, Mayor? I guess that's probably the question that Alderwoman, Alderperson Oberlin is referencing is that you said it was, and then you said it wasn't.
No, I believe I said that this room was not done, the one.
No.
The first sentence, Mayor commented, executive session room, the mayor's office in between the mayor's office and the administrator's office was completed. This one was not.
Executive.
The night we went into executive session, you wanted to be in here, and I told you that this room still was not completed. So we were gonna walk down to the other, but all the other people had left the building, and we came back into this room.
It says Mayor Solomon commented that the executive session room, mayor's office and administrator's office have been insulated already, and he noticed a big difference.
Exec- executive session room, clearly, which is this room right behind us. But you later said wasn't done, so we're just wanting to know it wasn't done.
Would you like an apology?
No, just, we're just asking.
I just asked for clarification.
I didn't write the minutes.
I did not say that you did it.
I think, I think the rooms are defined.
But when there's an error in the minutes, do we not ask for clarification any other time? I'm merely asking for clar- is that out of line, City Attorney?
I just think what you're saying is that you called the room down at the end of the hall, the executive session room. I don't know whether you, you actually used that word or not. That's up to the, the tape to decide, but it, it's not out of line to request a change in the minutes if the minutes are inaccurate, but I don't know whether they're inaccurate.
This is not the executive session room?
Well, I think we have held executive sessions down in that end. I don't know whether the mayor used that term to describe the one that is next to his office and between the administrator's office when he was making the comment during the meeting. I don't know whether he used that language, but I don't know whether that is technically an executive conference room or not. I mean, I think this right here is the designated executive conference room, but.
Of course, right behind the chambers. That'd be the most obvious room for executive session. I don't think there's any confusion that this room here, was it for executive session or not? I think, I mean, that was part of the whole process of designing this area was a separate executive session room off of the chambers. I mean, I think that's... I, I guess the question is, what's that other conference room called? Because that's what it needs to be defined as on the minutes.
There you go.
So is that the, the mayor administrator's conference room? That's how it should be defined?
I would call, I would say call it the administrative, you know, administration conference room.
So that's how.
The other suggestion I would make is, is table these, these particular minutes, pull the tape, make sure it's accurate, and just table them, and then bring them back in two weeks.
Well, if the work was done, we should have receipts and dates of when the work was done. That's the, that's the proof in the pudding.
But however.
You got paid receipts that a room was insulated, soundproofed.
But if the mayor.
When it took place and which room it was.
But if the mayor mis- misstated it as the executive conference room in the minutes, then that's what the minutes should reflect, because that's what he said. I don't know what he said, whether he mistakenly called it an executive conference room, or he really said it's the conference room next to the mayor's office between, if the words executive session room were in there or not in his statement, is I guess what I'm asking. I, I don't know.
And a separate issue is, was it done? So it's, first, first issue is, what do the minutes reflect? Second issue we need to look into is, was it done?
Thank you. Exactly.
So I think the best thing to do is exactly what Steve suggested, is just table it for now, and then.
I make a motion to table.
Do Alderman Richer, you rescind it? You rescind your motion?
Yeah.
To the second Alderman Jefferson?
Sure.
Well, I have a correction as well. On page nineteen, item two on the top, it says Alderwoman Gazzal interrupted. Minutes are a legal document. Interrupted, that's a personal opinion, is a subjective, it's not fact. So I would like that word to be removed. I'm not sure we started putting, like, for me, say, an example, Alderwoman Oberlin sneezed. That's not.
We are not on that agenda item just yet, though.
No, I'm still on the same minutes.
Page nineteen is on item two.
I'm still on the same minutes.
What's it under?
It's regular meeting. This is what we had a motion on, the regular meeting.
No, we had the motion on August twenty-eighth work session.
What section of it?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the twenty-eighth is the one that's being tabled.
All right, I'll hold it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, is there a second to the table?
To table it.
Okay.
We have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Sapidi to table the minutes of the August twenty-eighth, two thousand three work session minutes. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Richer.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kowal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now you have a motion, a motion before you for the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on September fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Motion would be in order.
Some movements, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderperson Oberlin to approve the minutes of the September fifth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. Questions or comments?
Do I need to re, restate my comment?
Yes.
All right, so page nineteen, on the minutes of regular meeting, says Alderwoman Gazzal interrupted, and I would like that to be removed, because minutes are a legal document, as I said it earlier. The word interrupted, that's a personal opinion, it's subjective, it's not effect. So basically, like, me saying, I'm gonna pick on you because you sometimes sneeze. So, like, we, like, we're twenty minutes, and while somebody's talking, Alderwoman Oberlin will sneeze, will say Alderwoman sneezed. That's not, that's not actual minute, that's not. So I need that to be removed.
You know, I think when the people think these out, they only type what they hear. I don't know how they can make somebody in state feel like, they're typing what they hear. They're not changing it. They're typing exactly what they hear.
I agree with you, but did I say that the word interrupted? I didn't say the word interrupted.
I don't know. It's too ritual. Who knows? I don't know what happened.
Well, I know, because I checked, I read the minutes, and I watched my meetings. So if we're gonna start picking, and we're gonna, we can choose what we're gonna put in a minute, so let's, let's add here on page thirteen, item number two, can you add on my comment that also added the first three words of the Constitution is "we the people"? So if we're gonna go minute by word by word, maybe we should start typing everything.
So what I would suggest is, I was just talking to the mic here, what I would suggest is you make a motion as amended by Councilwoman Gazzal, and you guys vote on it. The council will vote on it as amended, taking the word interrupted out.
I will change my motion to be as amended by Councilwoman Gazzal.
Gazzal.
Was I the second or the, I don't remember?
I would change my motion for them to be amended by Councilwoman Gazzal.
Thank you.
Who was first?
Darrell.
We have a motion with the amended comments by Alderwoman Gazzal, by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderperson Oberlin. Questions? Any more questions or comments in regards to the written minutes?
I have one more question. Claudia Richer, is there a reason why we're not getting the minutes from the last work session?
Because we had an employee that types them, was on jury duty, and then she had time off.
That was it last week, was it?
Yes. Yes.
My understanding, some staff here, they, they heard you guys were watching the meeting, making fun of, fun of some councils, so I think the minutes are more important than watching city council meeting on city time and making fun of me and Mr. Alderman Sapidi. But I, I'm done with my comments. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Uh, we need a roll call.
Roll call.
John Richer.
Yeah.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kowal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Steph, good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no agenda items, but will entertain any questions.
Any questions of city attorney? Great report. Thanks. City admini- management consultant, Steve Golden. Good evening, Steve.
Yes, I have one, one agenda item, and I have two other things I want to bring to the council, just under a quick report. So as discussed at the last workshop, you have before you the new dress code policy. The changes were made as per some language changes and some grammatical changes, so it is before you, and we recommend passage of the policy as presented at the workshop of last week.
I have a comment on that.
Yes.
Is there a way, by the part, the section that says enforcement, that we add paragraph where it says the city administr- administrative or consultant is responsible for, to enforce all the department dress code, including treasurer, clerk, I mean, everybody, even though they have a department, everybody should be, the city administrator should be able to enforce that, for all the departments.
I don't know whether, are you talking about, like?
Enforcement.
When you say enforcement, I mean, this says that the decision of the administrator is final as to what is or isn't appropriate. I don't know whether, what other enforcement we're talking about.
Well, it says, says department heads are responsible for monitoring the appearance of their representative, or respective employee, but doesn't determine that the city administrator... So the determination and acceptable appearance is made by the city administrator or design.
Or is designated.
And shall be final.
I think that, personally, I think that's good enough. That means the city administrator has the right to turn around and say, department head, you need to, you know, this is wrong, you need to have them change your clothes or whatever. I think, I think it says that.
So you have the right, an example, to go to treasurer and you say, I want your staff to follow the ordinance, correct?
Well, that's, that's a good point, because I'm not sure, and that's a legal question. I'm not sure if the, the city administrator has any authority over the treasurer's staff or the clerk's staff. I, I don't know if that.
Well, they should, their city staff.
And so.
The treasurer does not manage the staff.
No, I get it. I get it.
He has a department head, and.
I don't know the legal.
The clerk is, is the same thing. It's the city staff.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
What is the point of ordinance? We're not gonna follow it. Sorry, treasurer.
It's okay. It's a, it's a, it's a policy.
I'm just trying to tie the policy.
Yeah, it's a policy. Correct. It's a policy. You're right.
Not an ordinance, it's a policy.
You're correct.
Well, I mean, the city administrator ordinance designates what the city administrator's authority is. I, I, if you are going to cloak the city administrator with the authority of enforcing just this policy, then I would suggest that it be removed, not removed. I mean, it can stay in the policy, but I think it needs to be in your administrator ordinance, just like when you removed the finance director from the ambit of that list of responsibilities of the city administrator.
Well, city administrator should be able to manage staff, no matter what, you know?
I don't disagree.
Okay. So the other thing I noticed here that we don't have, like, what happened if staff don't follow this document?
Yeah, disciplinary, so typical, typical disciplinary, you would send a person home to change without, you give the person a warning for at least the first couple of weeks, right, till they use the policy. They do it again, you send them home without pay to change to come back to work, where they have to take time off. That's a verbal, written, so verbal probably sending them home, written, suspension, time off, and then termination, so you follow the normal disciplinary progress.
Don't you think that should be in the policy?
Yes.
Every, every detail, every step you just outlined verbally should be.
I think it's in the handbook. Handbook covers it. I, I could be wrong.
Well, there should be reference to that in the handbook, then, in the enforcement part.
There is. There is.
The handbook itself has an entire enforcement provision that outlines that this is how you enforce it and go through these steps. Elsewhere in the, in the.
Why, just I make sure that this reflects this particular ordinance?
Yes, so, so I, I, I'm not used to having every policy, you know, there's seventy-five policies in the employee handbook, right? And every policy has to follow that one standard. I don't think you want to single out one policy to say it's got, you know, policy or standard. I can tell you the employee handbook, it's been vetted. HR will tell you that, that as long as that policy is followed, and it's been adopted by the city council, which I'm assuming has, it's everybody's right, or everybody's job to hold people accountable by following that policy, the, the discipline policy of any policy in the city.
I just wanna make sure.
No, good question.
Thank you. Need a motion?
So the one, the one question I'm not sure of is, how we address, we need that, I'm gonna ask the attorney stiff here, to put in this, that includes, when you say city staff, it includes treasury, treasury department?
All departments.
All departments, including treasury and.
You have to name each department, and you have to name.
And clerk. I think that has to be spelled out in here.
It does, and I think that you may need to, you may need to tweak the administrator ordinance at some point.
Okay.
Soon.
Yeah.
So we'll add that in there, so as amended, I would recommend approval as amended with the language in there that says includes the treasury staff as well as the clerk's staff. The city administrator has the, the right to enforce.
And I think the administrator, I mean, since we're talking about it, the administrator ordinance needs to be revised anyway, because we now have a budget officer, and I believe that the administrator ordinance still cloaks the administrator with the responsibility of preparing the budget, so I think that needs to be, now that Lisa is the budget officer per our conversion to the budget system, so that's another cleanup for the administrator ordinance as well.
Oh, yeah, I think we need to look at that over. There's probably other things that need to be cleaned up on that.
Correct.
So I guess my, my suggestion is that instead of doing it piecemeal, we kind of give the administrator ordinance a complete look over and overhaul at the same time, instead of doing it little bits and bits.
Let me ask you a question. Does this pertain to elected officials too, to any department, or just employees?
It's an employee handbook and an employee policy.
Our employees. Right?
Employees only.
Only, only council can vote on, on certain standards for themselves, for the council, including elected officials.
If you want to have a policy for yourselves, you can do that, but this is not intended to be a policy for you.
Okay, that's good.
Motion would be in order. We have a motion for the revised dress code policy for the employee handbook as amended and discussed here previously by Alderwoman Gazzal, seconded by Alderperson Oberlin. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kowal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Richer. Motion carries.
I have three other, two other quick things. First of all, I put on your diaries some of the giveaways that we're talking, thinking about, the pen and notepad, with the city of Crest Hills logo on it for the grand opening open house. Good question was brought to me earlier, so the notepad's gonna be blank, city of Crest Hill logo with the, you know, grand opening, open house. The person with the umbrella is not on, it's not on there. That just, that just shows, you know, what the notepad looks like. So it's gonna be blank with our logo and the verbiage on top. Second, the pen, it says grand opening or, or city center grand opening, and so we thought it was a really nice giveaway, those sticky notes and pens. The sticky notes only come in five hundred, so you can't buy anything less than five hundred, but they're only sixty cents a piece. The pens, you can order two fifty, and I want to say they were fifty or forty some cents. I don't have it in front of me here. So very affordable, nice little giveaways for residents, and I think they can be used. So any comments or thoughts?
Do you think five hundred would be enough?
Yeah, I mean, we're, everybody takes one. We're speaking about two hundred and fifty people here. We could order more, certainly order more, give, give ways for any other, you know, any other function.
Are you just ordering two hundred and fifty of the pens?
Yeah, we can certainly order five hundred too, but, but two fifty was the minimum order.
I'm okay with how it's presented here.
Okay. Do I order no pet, you know, more pets? So it's up to you. I have no problem ordering more pets. The second, second item is, I mentioned, I think, two weeks ago about the plaque, the cornerstone plaque. Got a call from the contractor today. Unfortunately, because of whatever reasons, the, the person or the company that was gonna do this tripled the charge for a, for a rush order. So it was gonna be about twenty-five hundred dollars, two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars. They were gonna charge six thousand dollars for a rush order. Black bronze, the verbiage is, I showed you guys via the emails, but they wanted six thousand dollars for the rush order, roughly twenty-five to twenty-eight hundred for the, they do the nice black bronze for the initial. So the recommendation is to, we can pay it, or we can have them mock up a really nice looking one and have it just, it's gonna be like that foam board or that, they call it alligator board, do a real nice professionally done, type set, logo on it, and then have it taped up to the spot up there, double-faced tape, tape it up there, as the interim, and then when the new one comes in, we can install it, save roughly around three thousand dollars, or we can go ahead and do the rush order.
Well, I think it would be silly to spend three thousand dollars on the rush order. It's unfortunate, but I, I thought that price was kind of low. I used to.
Yeah, the black bronze.
I used to work with granite bronze.
Yeah, the black bronze, so initially was, quote, was on a piece of metal, and you had brought up black bronze, and so went up a little bit, about a thousand dollars for the black bronze.
If you can get me the artwork, I'll donate a sign to utilize that.
Oh, perfect. All right, perfect. Yeah, I'll get you, I have, I have the contractor's type set put together. That's the right term. I don't know.
Have them, have them send over what they have, type set, their approved artwork.
Okay, you got it.
Very generous of you, Glenn. Thank you for always being so generous to the city.
I get them real cheap.
I don't care. You always stand up, you always do things. Thank you.
Last thing is just a couple, thank yous. Staff has been really working hard. They always work hard, but certainly Glenn has had several challenging water main breaks for the past week, ten days. Very challenging water main break this morning, where they found where the break was at. Their staff's been out all hours of the day, night, repairing water main, water main breaks, to make sure there's a very minimal disruption to Crest Hill residents. So kudos to the Public Works team. Also, a thank you to, goes out to the PD. There's some unfortunate incidents that happened the last couple of days. PD did a great job of keeping everybody informed and did a nice job of, of, of the human side of policing. Some, some tough, tough things happened. And then kudos to finance for doing a great job with the property tax rebate. It started, it's always a challenging time with the property tax rebate program, and they're well-prepared and ready to go. So some really, really good things are happening here with Crest Hill and staff, working very hard. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Steve.
I got a question. Steve, I've been talking with Don Seaman, and we've been running into some issues with residents parking trailers, cars, whatever, in backyards, and there's nothing in our ordinance that prohibits that, but we're getting so many of them just pulling them in backyards, and I don't think there should be a place for people to be parking trailers, trucks, whatever it may be, you know? We have in our ordinance where a swingset can't be in the front yard. It's a backyard use only.
Right.
So I think, you know, parking a trailer's truck should be on a driveway or that, not in a rear yard. So I don't know if we can, you can get with Ron Metzner, Don Seaman, and maybe the attorney, and try to clean up our ordinance and get it so that's forbidden, that people can't park there.
Yeah.
You know, they can park on their driveway or up to their garage, or.
Right.
But to be parking in the rear yard, I think we need to, you know, have where that's not permitted.
Right. So currently, just for, just for everyone's knowledge, currently, there's no determination you can park in front or backyard unless you're on a hard, you know, hard surface is the only criteria. So currently, you can park a car in the backyard if it's on a hard sur- on a hard surface, technically in our codes. So that needs to be changed, which I think is a great idea to change that. A lot of people put a double garage door in, and they drive through the garage and they park their cars or vehicles in the backyard. All it requires is a hard surface. So if we change that, the second thing is recreation of vehicles. So we allow recreation of vehicles to be parked on a hard surface, but we only allow one. There's no timeframe, so you can't have a boat and a camper. We only allow one. So that's something to think about as well. Some places only allow, some municipalities only allow to park the recreational vehicle there for a certain period of time, or the boat there a certain period of time, a week, ten days, or whatever. The third thing I think we need to look at is the amount of cars registered to one home. So a lot of times you might have some homes having businesses that aren't exposed to, and they have businesses, and they have customers coming in and out. So a lot of municipalities limit, you know, four cars that have to be registered to the house, can park in your driveway or, or in front of your house. If a car is there more than ten days not registered to the house, subject to at least a phone call or potential ticket. So what that does, it limits potential businesses where you have customers, or maybe an auto mechanic place, like, like we think this home might be doing some type of auto mechanic repair, that stops that, because you can't have cars there not registered to your house for a long period of time. So those are the things I think will address your issue, and we'll certainly work on that and present something to the council.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Steve?
What if somebody's got three kids, and they got, each kid got a car, the husband got a car, the wife's got a car, there's five cars, where are you gonna put them?
So you, you can go as many cars as you want. Whatever reason, four was the one we picked out, and you can go five cars. You can go, you go as many cars as you want. Totally up to the council. Some places do four cars, some, some do more. So it's totally up to the council how many cars you want to allow, if that's how you want to go. the council how many cars you want to allow, if that's how you want to go. But a lot of municipalities do that, especially with renters, especially with landlords who don't really care about what's going on at that house. So this is a good mechanism to really enforce potential things that we don't want going on in homes by having this type of ordinance. But you can make, companies, we can make it five houses or five cars, we can make it whatever number you want. There, there should be a number there, just so police department has a mechanism to check and see what's going on.
Well, I think you did mention, when you were talking, that they register to the home.
Has to be registered to the house, correct.
Right, so.
Right. Now, obviously, if, if a relative comes over for a week, you know, phone calls me, or the police department will see this car sitting there. Usually, it's about a week to ten days before they start checking out, or usually it's a complaint from the neighborhood. Neighborhood kind of polices themselves on this. A lot of times say, hey, this car's been parked in front of the house, it's, it's not, it's been sitting there for six weeks, it's just sitting there, you know, so it gives the police department a mechanism to see what's going on.
Can, can we put this on a work, a agenda for a work session?
Absolutely.
Talk a little bit more about it, we don't have to hash it out tonight. I think that'd be a good work session topic.
Absolutely correct, yep.
I have one.
See, now I had that problem. I had four cars, and I had a company car, cars registered in New Jersey.
Right.
Sitting in front of my house every day, weekends, year round.
So, so in that case, I mean, without hashing this out, in that case, you would just contact the police department and say, hey, I'm an out-town salesperson, it's registered in New Jersey, I'll be authorized, and you're good. Again, this is how I'm used to, you know, just from some things I realize. But there are so many ways of doing it, and there's so many ways to, to kind of control that.
There's Dalby, there's, there's people that got three or four kids, they've all got cars, and just.
Nowadays, everybody's got a car, yes.
Parents, there's six cars out there, you know, you can't tell them they can't park there, they live there.
Yeah.
That's a tough one.
Yeah, it's a tough one.
Ready?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you put on next executive session, next week, next Monday, the twenty-fifth staff meeting and executive session? Thank you.
Okay. Well, with this on our workshop, give us about, give us probably about four weeks to, to vet this out, give us some good recommendations and some good options. So we'll shoot for maybe, maybe the second meeting in, in, in October.
Right, second.
Second Monday in October.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Moving on to Public Works Department, our Assistant Public Works Director, Blaine Klein. Good evening, Blaine.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have three items for you tonight. First item, seeking approval of pay request thirteen from Williams Brother Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to the I E P A for approval and dispersment for a total amount of three hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents.
So moved as presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Overland, seconded by Alderman Dyke for approval of pay request number thirteen from Williams Brother Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to the I E P A for approval and dispersment for a total of three hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Marcus DiPede.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kowal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
And Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Second item is approval of pay request number eight from Vissering Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to the I E P A for approval and dispersment for a total amount of one million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-five cents.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazzal, seconded by Alderperson Overland for the approval of pay request number eight from Vissering Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to the I E P A for approval and dispersment for a total amount of one million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-five cents. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Marcus DiPede.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kowal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
And Tina Overland.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the third item, as you've just approved these last two pay requests, because of the I E P A annual audit, they are probably about four months, two payments, but four months behind on releasing the payments to us, so then we can release them to Vissering for the West Plant project. So I'm seeking approval of dispersment of pay request number five and six to Vissering Construction prior to receiving payments from the I E P A in the amount of two million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and two dollars and seventeen cents.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazzal, seconded by Alderperson Overland to approve pay request number five and pay request number six with Vissering Construction Incorporated prior to receiving payment from I E P A in the amount of two million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and two dollars and seventeen cents. Questions or comments?
How is the, the progress going there on time?
Yeah, so far, so good. That was one of the reasons that we brought this tonight, to make sure we stay on schedule, but so far, it's gone very well.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kowal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Marcus DiPede.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
Blaine, I just want to thank you. I know you, I talked to you earlier, you had quite the deal over there with that water main break, and I just want to thank you for stepping up and doing such a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, Blaine. Moving on to our City Engineer, Ron Wedeman. Good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two items on for tonight. First, looking for a motion to execute a professional service agreement with Christopher Burke Engineering, L T D, to perform design engineering services for Boreo Drive, Waterford, and Gaylord, two thousand and twenty-four road rate rehabilitation projects for not to exceed an amount of thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand. This was presented at the previous workshop.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazzal, seconded by Alderperson Overland to execute a professional service agreement with Christopher B. Burke Engineering to perform design engineering services for the Boreo Drive, Waterford, and Gaylord, two thousand and twenty-four roadway rehabilitation projects not to exceed an amount of thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. Questions or comments?
Just one more time, can I ask you, I apologize, when does this start?
This work will be scheduled for next summer.
Next summer?
Yeah. The, I think what you're thinking of is we have a, a current, a current resurfacing project we're starting on Boreo, and that'll be starting this week. That's at Randage going on, going north.
I thought they were supposed to start last week.
Yeah, he started saw cutting and pulling curb, but he's going to start mobilizing equipment this week. So the work that they've done, I really haven't noticed yet, but they're going to start pulling curb on Saturday. I'm sorry, yeah, Saturday, pour next week, and then at the end of the week, they're going to mobilize their equipment to start milling it and doing hot mix next week.
And the next question that I've been asked, how long do you think this, this process will take, like a week, two, three?
Uh, it'll probably take about four weeks.
Four weeks.
To get everything done, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Joe Kowal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Uh, yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Marcus DiPede.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item's looking for a motion to execute a professional services agreement with Spaceco Inc. to perform design engineering services in bid document preparation for city center park not to ex, for not to exceed an amount of twenty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. This was previously discussed at a workshop, this is to determine the final grading and underground utilities at the park, so that we can install grass and blanket.
Motion would be in order.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke to execute a professional service agreement with Spaceco Incorporated to perform design engineering services in bid documentation preparation for the city center park not to exceed an amount of twenty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Marcus DiPede.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kowal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then the last item is looking for a motion to execute a proposal with Carefree Systems to design a new irrigation system for city center park for not to exceed an amount of thirty-five hundred dollars.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson to execute a proposal with Carefree Systems to design a new irrigation system for city center park not to exceed an amount of three thousand, five hundred dollars. Questions or comments? Roll call.
John Boucher.
Yeah.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Marcus DiPede.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kowal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Anything else, Ron?
Um, just real quick, I have two other construction projects that are started, one started today. That's the citywide concrete flat work, sidewalks and driveways. We started doing some saw cutting today, so you'll see them out there. Work should go through middle to end of October. And tomorrow, a meeting with the contractor that's going to take over maintenance of the traffic signals at Theodore and Gaylord. So they'll be starting that work to add the left-hand turn signal to go from, from eastbound Theodore to northbound Gaylord. But you'll also see some, some concrete work and resurfacing that will be happening in the next couple of weeks out there also, and that's it.
Any questions of City Engineer?
No, just stick, I know you told me, but can you use the public, gas and wash is on time? It's, they're going really fast.
Yeah, right now, gas and wash is, they're trying to hit a, a opening date of before Christmas. So that's what they're trying to do, it's a very aggressive schedule, but all the permits, to my knowledge, I mean, Don's not here to verify, but I believe all the permits have been issued for the construction. So they're, 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 they're milling quickly.
And also, if you guys can thank Don, he, they cut today all the.
The grass.
Uh, grass, yes. I got right away pictures and text messages from two residents, so thank you so much.
I'll let him know tomorrow.
Yes, they are happy.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Community Development, our interim, Community Development Director, Ron Metzger. Good evening, Ron.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you. Obviously, there's nothing formal on the agenda from the Community Development Department, but I would report that last week was my first week. I came back this week, that's a good sign. Impressed by your staff. You got a lot of good people that are committed to the future of the community, working here, trying to do their best for the community, so that's, I was impressed. Spending most of my time right now just trying to understand and get a better grasp on the codes, ordinances, and policies of the community, who does what, where there's some gaps, where things need to be filled in. Last Thursday, we conducted a meeting with the Public Works Department, the City Engineer, the city's Consulting Senior Planner in Administration, to further and advance a, the development of a development guide that would be provided to the, the public and developers, that would be kind of the roadmap of what the city's rules, regulations are, help them get through that process quicker and less painfully. So I think that would be a great initiative from an economic development perspective going forward.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Any questions?
Yeah, Ron, I just want to thank you because I think you just told us more in your first week on the jobs than we've heard in seven years, so thank you.
But I do have to agree with you, we do have amazing staff in here. I'm proud of them.
Okay, moving on to our Police Department. Police Chief Ed Clark, good evening, Ed.
Evening, Mayor. I didn't have anything on the agenda this evening. The reports are in your packet. One thing I will note, and we will be obviously advertising as well through Facebook and website, is from October twenty-fifth of this year through November twenty-seventh, on various days, we'll be conducting some training. A component of that training will be the use of the, the ride behind the police department here where traffic stops. We will, we'll make sure that we notify the public, we'll block the road off, and, and it's mandated training that we have to do every, every three years. We're going to make sure we meet those mandates and do that training. So just to let everybody know, we will have some, some point that we will be blocking that off and conducting training, but we'll have a lot of notification to make sure everybody's aware. So just wanted to update Council on that.
Any questions of the Police Chief?
Can we put, I know, I'm asking again, and I'm not asking for updates this time on what is status, can we put this on the work session so we can, as the council, make a decision on this?
Certainly. You talking about the stop sign you have?
Yes.
The stop sign you're talking about?
Yes, it's been going on since February, I don't want to hear about it anymore from the rest.
Absolutely. I, like I said, I, I keep testering this, this Mr. Chavez, and I have not gotten.
I understand, but the city will need to make a decision, since we were the problem from the beginning. For when we develop something, we need, whoever is in charge is building department, they need to notify the developer that some stop sign, they need to go there. So it's a city fault, and that's why I feel the need that we need this to put on the agenda.
Absolutely.
Because safety comes first.
Will do.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, thanks, Ed. Moving on to the Mayor's Report. I do not have any agenda items, I have three announcements still. You will be receiving your water bill at next week, the last week of September. So the water bills, you receive them on the odd months, and your payment is due on the even months. So it's a two-month water bill, but I know there's a lot of people that don't look inside the wa, inside the water bill except for how much they owe. But you will have inside that water bill this month, next week, you're going to have the rebate check for your property tax rebate for two thousand and twenty-three. So you have until December first of two thousand and twenty-three to fill out the form and return it to City Hall here at the Clerk's or the Treasurer's Office. You can get the rebate form also on the website. You do have to have a copy of your two thousand and twenty-two paid tax bill included with the property tax rebate form. There's only about four questions. It should take less than thirty seconds to fill, fill the form out, but we need those things to have it, and you have to fill it out completely in order to be given your rebate check, which will come around St. Patrick's Day, around March seventeenth of two thousand and twenty-four. So the rebate check is for the property taxes that you paid in two thousand and twenty-two. So make sure that all of that is included. Also, in the news, in, in the water bill is going to be our fall newsletter, so I would ask that you take time to take a look at that. There's a lot of information for the upcoming winter season from many of the departments with, within the city. And finally, we will be having an open house for this new facility on Saturday, October twenty-first, from ten a.m. to one p.m. So we're going to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony at ten, ten a.m., followed by tours of the Police Department and the City Hall Building. We are also going to have some refreshments for everybody and some gifts, as you heard tonight, to be passed out to everybody, and probably some vendors that will also be here. I think that's still under discussion though. So hope to see everybody here, so you can take a look at the building and get a tour of the Police Department and the administration side of City Hall. That is all that I have. If anybody has any questions of the Mayor, I'll try to answer them.
I have a couple. First, just a correction, you said the check will be in there, but it's actually the form, just.
The form, correct, my fault.
I just want people to understand it's the form, not the check. Secondly, our city newsletter, who prints that? Where do we get that printed?
Um, Third Millennium, I believe it is, yes.
It is, yeah.
Who does the typesetting in there?
Um, I collect all of the things from the Department Heads. Maribel kind of lays it out to the best of her ability, and then we send it off to Glenn, and he finalizes everything. And then it goes to Third Millennium for the printing, for the stuffing, and everything And then it goes to Third Millennium for the printing, for the stuffing, and everything else, folding.
Once again, I just want people to understand just how much Mr. Conklin donates to the city. I'm presuming this, again, is also donated pro bono work. And I want to thank you, Glenn, once again, for consistently dedicating yourself to the betterment of the city and getting nothing in return, just satisfaction. I just want to thank you because I don't think people realize this, what a dedicated human being you are. So thank you very kindly.
Okay, moving on to the city clerk's report. Our city clerk, Christine Verche Hall. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening. I have nothing to report tonight.
Any questions of city clerk? All right, thanks, Chris. Moving on to our city treasurer's report. Our treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, may I have Lisa kick off the first two items before here?
Sure. So the first item is, we would be looking for a motion to approve a one-time payment to the City of Crest Hills Police Pension Fund in the amount of $897,704. This was discussed at the September 11th, 2023 City Council meeting, and Glenn and I, two days later, met with the Police Pension Board, discussed with their actuarial, uh, the whole process of how we're going to levy going forward. So this will truly be a one-time payment, and then every year, Glenn and I will make sure that there's agreement with the Pension Board and with the city on what we're going to be levying. And we actually have that, uh, figured out for the next levy that I'm going to be bringing to you next week to talk about. So, um, we'd be just looking for a motion. If there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them related to this, but this was discussed at the last work session.
So moved as presented.
Second. Motion by Alderman Person Overland, second by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of an $897,704 uh, one-time additional contribution to the Police Pension Fund. Questions or comments? Roach Hall.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Ken Oberlin?
Yes.
Marks Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche? Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So then the next mo- the next item that I have would be to approve an ordinance supplementing the budget ordinance for fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2023, ending April 30th, 2024 for the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois. And so what this encompasses, there's a memo, and if you look at Exhibit A, it'll show you that we are going to be amending the budget to include that $897,704 amount that will come from the fund balance. But then also, there was Well 14 that, that Ron had spoken about at the last meeting, that we need to take another additional $268,000 out of fund balance. So Ron was able to find some savings. He went through the current budget. He found some savings in the Lake Michigan allocation. He also found savings in the water replacement. So that offset with the total amount that he's projecting Well 14 to be is $813,000. So the net of the savings versus what he has to pay is an additional $268,000 that will come out of fund balance. We're hoping that some of these projects do come in less, but we figured we'd amend the budget now. Um, I'm also going to be working with the other departments because we're also finding that, again, we budgeted to have some positions that were filled with employees, and we're using more contracted services. So we're going to be swapping between line items. So at some point in the future, we'll probably come with another budget amendment, hoping that we're going to find savings in other areas. But we have Blaine here, who, Blaine and Ron were, um, surfacely involved in a lot of the budgeting last year. So with the loss of the Director of Public Works, we're trying to, the three of us are trying to work through. In fact, we have a meeting tomorrow morning. So again, in the spirit of transparency, we'll work through as much as we know right now. Budget being a point in time when we're bringing that to you. We're trying to summarize what we're looking at a year ahead. But it's sort of a rolling budget, so, um, I guess that was a long explanation. But that was the premise behind this agenda item. I just didn't know if you had any other questions, if you wanted some additional clarification on this particular ordinance for the amending this year's budget. Just for those two items, it's basically for the Police Pension and then also for Well 14.
So moved as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, second by Alderman Zepidi for an ordinance supplementing the budget ordinance for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2023, and ending April 30th, 2024, for the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois. Questions or comments?
Just a quick comment. I want to thank all of you, the three of you, for working so well together and continuing on trying to move the city regardless of all the up and downs that we've been through. I know I sound like a broken record, but facts are facts. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to sound like a repeat of the broken record because I was going to say the same thing. I appreciate Lisa, Ron, Blaine, all your dedication as well. I mean, to go through all this and, and to go above and beyond is, is very much appreciated. And I know I say, say this to you privately, but I want to say this publicly so people understand that you're giving extra, and it's greatly appreciated. Thank you, all three of you.
Thank you.
Roach Hall, please.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Ken Oberlin?
Yes.
Marks Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Motion carries ordinance 1960.
Thank you all for that. I'm going to take over for the easy stuff. I seek your approval on our list of bills through September 19th of 2023 in the amount of $2,772,987.28.
So moved as presented.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, second by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the list of bills in the amount of $2,772,987.28. Questions or comments? Roach Hall.
Marks Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche? Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
And Ken Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all for that. Uh, another business, I, uh, like to report regular overtime payroll from August 28th through September 10th of 2023 in the amount of $242,486.21. Uh, another order of business, order of business I'll get out of the way is, uh, City Council, uh, elected officials have IML coming up this weekend. On your dais will be a travel and expense report. This is the staff report. You guys are granted a $100 per, $100 per diem. So the numbers under the breakfast, lunch, and dinner, those are consolidated. Uh, as a reminder, we spoke of what the qualifiers are and what the disclusions are. If you have any questions, come to me or Lisa beforehand, but, um, obviously, no alcohol will be reimbursed. Um, travel to and from, uh, city events is covered as well as food while we're there, but not, uh, to other things. There's a policy in place if you need a copy of that. So we look forward to you, uh, turn those in afterwards. And then, um, uh, the last item of business is, uh, we're seeing consideration on a, uh, employee transfer policy. In a nutshell, what this is, uh, uh, speaks of is in the event an employee of a, uh, employee of the city's transfers to a lesser paying position, that if they change that, they were to change that job description or change their job, that the, uh, new placement would be at their, basically their seniority, but they would be paid at the position that they're taking. So, um, in the event that somebody's in the currently employed and has made that type of transfer, there would not be a clawback. However, there would be adjustment. And as asked at work session, that individual or individuals would be allowed to be reconsidered for their past post, which is higher paid. This is an assertion of language into our, uh, uh, into our policy. Um, it's not clarity. It was never addressed. We feel that the, uh, 150 contract does address it. However, just, this is something that we're going to do, or we're suggesting you do moving forward. This is recommended by, uh, our temporary HR director. So we seek approval on that, on that policy. And I'd take a motion if anybody's so inclined.
So moved as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Dyke for approval of the employee transfer policy effective October 1st, 2023. Questions or comments?
Just a quick comment on it. Thanks, Steve Bollman, for catching that and for working with it on that. Good catch.
Thank you.
I'm glad you caught it, since we missed it last time, so, thank you.
Is this, is this anticipated to go into the handbook now? Because then I think it needs to have a section designation so we know where to put it.
Essentially, the CBA covers with this. However, it makes some clarity. If you're working as a lead operator, you get paid as lead operator. If you were to change to an operator, the assumption is you'd be an operator's pay. So we're looking at, um, I don't know where this goes in, where it would, where it would go. If you choose to have it in the handbook, that's, we just have to figure out-
But it should be in the handbook. I, I'm not familiar with the handbook numbering system.
So I, I guess my only suggestion is if you're approving the policy as written, if you just give me the ability to give it a section number and put it in the appropriate location in the handbook, um, we'll figure that out, but I just don't have that in writing.
I will give you the ability with my motion.
Okay. Also, what my second.
So is, there's no, nothing in our current policy that addresses this at all that would need to be removed and pla- and this would go in its place? Or is this going to be added because there's a total absence of discussion on this topic? I'm not sure.
There's an absence of this being addressed currently.
Okay, okay.
So this would be additional language to fully clarify what our, what our position is on people
Gotcha.
doing a transfer to a lesser paying position.
Okay, Roach Hall, please.
Nate Albert?
No.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Ken Oberlin?
Yes.
And Marks Zepidi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. I have, that's all I have unless there's any questions. Questions of the treasurer?
Just, um, to cover what the mayor said earlier about the rebate, I'm not sure who wants to take that. You guys are prepared for it in your office?
We're prepared to accept the forms and start the process. So there's, there's a lot of, it's a lot of manual work from my staff, but we get, we actually get a file from the county, and we start from there with PIN numbers. So it's very laborious, but it's something that we've dedicated to do for the residents, so we're ready for it.
And, uh, I know it's going to go in newsletters. Is there any way we can post that on Facebook? So continue a reminder, uh, that's what we did last few years.
Steve, can you talk to Maribel possibly about getting that on Facebook?
Yes.
And also on the website?
On the website, too.
And on TV scroll?
Great idea. I mean, it's all about awareness.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
Um, unfinished business. We have nothing. Anybody? New business? Committee liaison reports? Anybody? City council comments? Positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with your constituents? We begin with word one tonight. Alderman Dyke?
Uh, nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Verche?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Alderman Jefferson?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Resol?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Person Overland?
Well, I'm going to have to wish my, my little baby, my little Quinn, a happy birthday. He has a birthday this week, so happy birthday, dude.
Alderman Zepidi?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Albert?
Uh, nothing, Mayor.
Alderman Kubal?
Nothing to add.
Public comment. Anybody like to address any council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Billy?
My name's Bill King. Uh, if, if, if I'm not lying, just let me know, but I don't watch the council meetings, so I don't know. Have you guys done any more talk about Lake Michigan water? Are you still planning on going through it?
Yes, sir. We've been through it. We're three years into it now.
Can I ask why, though? What, what brought you to the term that we need a Lake Michigan water?
This is a public comment session. So if you'd like to make public comments, you can. If you'd like more in-depth information, I will certainly be more than glad to sit down and explain everything to you.
Why can't you say it now?
This is your time, Bill.
Exactly. That's what I want to hear. I want to hear the answer.
I answered you. We've been, we are committed to Lake Michigan water.
But why?
We are three years in.
I know, but why?
Because we did all of our homework, and this was the most feasible way to have a sustainable amount of water for the next 100 years for this city to come. And it was voted on by the city council three years ago, and everybody was in agreement to proceed with the Lake Michigan water with the five other communities of Romeoville, Shorewood, Joliet, Shanahan, and Manuka.
See, I talked to the, uh, the U.S. Geological Survey. I talked to Illinois Geological Survey. They didn't do any studies in Crest Hill. They did in Joliet. All right, but they didn't do any in Crest Hill. So that's why I'm wondering why. Why you guys feel. I also foiled the water department to get information. How do you guys know what your water table is when you guys don't take drawdowns? You guys, your water department does not take drawdowns. That tells you what the water table is. If you guys aren't taking these, how do you guys know what the water table is? No answer?
No answer.
I figured. How about you? Do you, I'm not going to put it on you, Blaine, because this was way before you got here.
Bill, make the comments to this table.
This is not for staff.
Make the comments to this table.
Well, I'm asking. I want to know who you talk to because-
Again, Bill, this is public comment.
Yes, I understand it. I'm part of the public.
So make your comments, and again, if you would like some answers, we're more than glad to sit down with you. Anything else you'd like to say?
I also foiled a few more items. You guys are going through a lot of money revamping the sewer's treatment plants. I, uh, foiled all the records from the last, say, six months, I think. They're not doing much maintenance. I haven't seen an oil change in any of the well, in any of the, at the sewer treatment. I, I just wonder because it just seems like you're throwing a lot of money away and not getting many results. You know, sewer treatment plants, wells, they will operate for a long time if you maintain them. But according to you guys' record, you're not. And you, as a mayor, it doesn't bother you?
Bill, you're certainly entitled to your opinions. I feel that we have a very professional staff that takes care of our water treatment plants and our wells.
That's why we've gone through, what, about 30 different department heads like in the last five years? I mean, what's the deal with that? How many department heads have you gone through? And why are they leaving? I know I've-
Anything else you'd like to say? Your time is running out. I've given you more time than, than should have been allocated.
Well, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
That's nice.
If you have anything else to say, please make a comment.
I will. I'm here next week.
Okay.
Two weeks.
Have a good night. Anybody else like to address city council? Please state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Linda?
I understand, Linda Dyke, I understand that the eviction notice was served. How long is that now? Is it five weeks?
I'd be told is hopefully they'll get to the county. I was, left a message for the sergeant in charge of black convictions today. I can get a call back, but tomorrow, I'm hoping to get a, a beat on exactly when that process will occur. It's a matter of time.
Good. Then I have other, one other question. A trailer that houses like grass cutters and lawn equipment, um-
Linda, we can't hear you. I'm sorry.
This thing should be way back there because to talk to him-
I know, but I couldn't hear what you said.
Okay, so a trailer with like, um, lawnmowers and stuff in it. Can that be parked on the road and not hooked up to a truck?
No.
Okay, so in the 1900 block at Kelly, it's there every night without anything hooked up to it?
I'll send there this evening.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, to our city attorney, Mike, is there a need for an executive session?
Yes, uh, executive session for two topics, uh, five ILCS 122C5, which is the purchase or sale of real property, and five ILCS 122C1, which is the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees.
Okay, motion would be in order?
So moved as presented.
We have a motion by Alderman Per- Alderwa- Alderperson Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an executive session for both 2C1 and 2C5. Questions or comments? Roach Hall.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche? Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Ken Oberlin?
Yes.
Marks Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
And Joe Kubal? Motion carries.
All right, we'll be going into executive session at 8:08 PM.
What rule are we going to use?